We'll go ahead and call the hearing to order. This is a hearing for the enhanced energy chapter review. It's a redo. The last time we did it, we didn't have all of the proper protocols. We had to send all the proposed plan to the surrounding towns. That wasn't done, but now that's done. So we'll go ahead and open up the hearing again. I guess rather than going through it again, because it's been like three hearings. If anybody has any questions on it, any comments? Anybody on Zoom? Sure, Maureen, go ahead.
And I apologize. So I know you've been working on this for a very, very long time. And I just now sort of was able to take a look at it. I did not read the 300-page document from the state. I don't know if you all have.
No.
Went through it, but I don't really remember it.
So my first question is, is that document a part of this plan? Is it attached to this plan that's attached to the town plan? Or?
The state?
Yes.
Well, it's based on it. So in terms of being attached, when it was written, I mean, it referenced it. But maybe, Jason, I don't know if you have any?
I don't think so. I think it's, the town's plan is supposed to be consistent with the state plan, but it's not adopted by reference or anything like that.
Right.
Okay. And the way I read through it, and I'm just summarizing, you're basically looking for 88 acres of solar, correct?
I'm not sure.
That is...
Could you reference on what page?
Sorry, in here, hold on.
Can I just get your name?
Yeah, Maureen Savage.
Page 14.
Might take me a minute.
Page 14? Yep, 14.
That's how I read it, is that that is the amount of land that you need to generate your 2050 goals.
That would be, it's not all in one place. That would be around...
Spread out.
Spread out, yeah.
Does that include private owners as well?
I don't believe so. I believe it's municipal. But maybe, Jason, could you?
So there's a target for how much renewable energy that the town would want to generate to reach the target. There's a fairly rough and fairly old number of acres that's assumed to be needed for each particular unit of energy. So it's an estimate, for sure. 88 acres is right. I believe that could be, it could be public, it could be private, it could be both.
Okay.
It's not really specifying. It's just trying to give you the sense of how much land area that would entail.
Right.
Okay. So I know you've got some maps. I didn't see them online anywhere. Is that all municipal property, or does that include private property as well?
Let's look, speaking of solar.
And I guess my follow-up question, have the property owners that are on that proposal been notified that they are on the proposal?
No, this is, it's basically a general map saying where solar would work based on a lot of different factors, like smoke aspect. It doesn't say this is where solar has to be.
Okay.
So you see here in the dark red, that's prime solar. The yellow is secondary. So it's certainly not saying that we have to have solar in these places. It's just, this is where the prime solar is. This is where secondary solar would be.
Okay.
Could you just mention what areas those are when you say the prime areas? Just sort of which parts of town?
Well, they're kind of scattered all over. Can we get this up on the camera? So maybe you could see.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Does that help?
Yeah, that does help. Okay, I see what you... okay.
Yeah, the dark red is the prime, and then the yellow is secondary.
Okay, thank you.
And that's a good point, Maureen. We'll get these posted on the town website.
Okay.
Because we still have to go through the select board hearing again.
Okay. And let's just say we get our 88 acres, okay? And you said that's municipal?
It's the target, it's the target that the town of Cavendish is striving for to meet, to meet the state goal in the local.
Okay. So are we talking about private solar farms or municipal solar farms?
It could be either or both.
Okay. And then is there restrictions on where that energy goes? Does it stay here in the town?
That's really, I mean, these things are generally going to go through the Public Utilities Commission, and it's sort of out of our control.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how does this benefit the taxpayers in this town? How does it benefit us? Does the money stay here? Do we get to use the credits from the solar farms if it's a municipal? Does it service this building or any of the other municipal?
That's actually what we're doing now with the one down by the transfer station.
But it doesn't cover everything, right?
He's, you know, Maureen, I think it covers more than everything.
Okay.
Yeah, we did a, there's a, we reviewed a solar farm up off of Tarville a couple of years ago. And they were considering, maybe, Jason, you can help me out here, but they're like solar credits that would go back to the town, or the, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, you know, a lot of these, each project is different, you know? And so it could be on town-owned land, and it would probably directly benefit the town and by virtue of that, the taxpayers. It could be a private solar project, and that landowner would be getting these payments and other things that might benefit them. They might in turn sell the credits to the town or the school or the community or whoever wants to take those credits. So there could be some benefit that way. But I don't know that there's any guarantee that that's the case. And I think, again, each project is unique, and we try to make each project work based on the finances of each deal, basically.
Right.
And just one point, like, this has been a pretty long conversation in like, you know, is it, should they do it and should we not? And I haven't been on the commission that long, but really, one of the big things was by adopting this energy chapter, we get its something deference?
Substantial deference.
Substantial deference. So it allowed the town to have more say in development projects, where if we didn't have that, we wouldn't get to have a say in some development, hey, someone wants to come put in solar? And the town wouldn't get much say into where that goes and how that, how that happens. Where if we have this, we get to be involved in that, in that process. And that was a big point of why we should do that. Where the state is gonna, you know, the state wants to have this stuff done. They're going to push a lot of that through, and this gives the town some more say and control over, over specific projects.
So this energy chapter is only related to solar projects?
No.
No.
Nope. It's hydro, wind, yeah, solar.
Only energy projects?
Only energy, yes.
Okay, because I know you've got the subdivision stuff coming up and all of that. Does that play into anything on the energy portion of it?
It could, if it, say, if there was a subdivision that went through Act 250. Yeah, they have their own criteria for energy efficiency. So they kind of overlap. But if it's, say, somebody wants to do a three-lot subdivision, there won't be any, there's nothing saying that they have to, you know, do solar panels or nothing like that, no. And I think, yeah, one of the big advantages of having this, having substantial deference, is that if we have specific kind of policies in our subdivision plans or the energy chapter, the state has to consider those and actually abide by them, unless there's like some greater need by the state. Whereas if we just have due consideration, you know, they'll look at it. So it actually gives the town some more, more power in terms of like if a big project comes in.
So I guess this might be a question for Jason. How many towns have participated in the region? Been adopted, adopted a plan?
There's a few that don't have one, but most do, like the majority do. I think maybe, I think it's six or 10 towns that do at this point.
Okay. One other, just a comment, I'm sorry, I'm very...
No, no.
So, you know, we're in construction. My husband owns a construction business. The residential building codes, energy codes, energy standards, the contractors are doing that anyways on new builds.
Yeah.
So I think since 1998, there should be an energy certificate. Your house was built after that date, it may be wrong on the date. But there should be a certificate, you know, in the basement of the home. There should be one on file with the town. So those are things that are already being done. So I don't, I guess my question is, I just don't know why we would need this plan? Because I think you have the power and control over these projects anyways, because Act 250 is already going to kick it back to the town plan without this.
Well, there's still Act 248 for you, which, Jason, do these energy projects, do they go through Act 250, or is it?
No, they generally don't go through Act 250. They normally go through the Public Utilities Commission. It's a 248 process. And again, if you have one of these plans like this one, you do have that due extra weight is given to the town's participation. And so we hope it's worth it, you know?
Well, this was...
But I think it's worth it.
Well, this was a mandate from the Select Board. It was a mandate that we work on this and go through all the language to make it our own and implement it into the town plan. It was actually a mandate by the Select Board. So, you know, those questions are also something for the Select Board, not just us, but it was a mandate for them that we established this energy chapter for the town plan. And from the very beginning, it was contentious with language about, could this down the road force people to do these energy changes for their properties? Even if it was not financially feasible? Could it be down the road that they were going to be forced to one day by state and local government to be forced into these alternative energy possibilities? And we were very careful on language, you know, in, like, on page seven. In order to meet our stated energy goals and targets, the town of Cavendish identifies the following implementation actions, also referred to as pathways. So these are just ideas, pathways, information for folks on, you know, what type of energy alternatives are out there.
So on page six, under energy targets, it says that the targets must be met if this plan is to receive substantial deference in Section 248 sitting procedure. So I guess I'm questioning, how do they, how do they know whether or not the standards? Is it just based on green mountain power usage? Because all the data in here is pre-COVID. You know, there isn't anything I see that's, that's 2020 or later. And we all know everything has just changed substantially. So I'm just questioning, what are the baselines for these, these measures? And how are they measured?
If I could answer that? So this is based on a state law, and then the Department of Public Service came up with guidelines. And between the state law and the guidelines, that kind of lays out what a town enhanced energy plan needs to do to get the substantial deference. And I think what that sentence that you're referencing means, at least in my mind, is that, you know, this plan needs to address all of those requirements in state law and guidelines. It's not saying that you need to do all of those, you know, goals by 100%. It's more, do you need all of the requirements of the state plan?
I guess, and the one other thing, and then I'll be quiet. You know, I'm struggling a little with the, you know, it says in here that the median income was, you know, in the mid $40,000. You know, we've quoted several solar projects that are just panels, net metering, with, with, you know, no battery backup or anything. They're in that $40,000 range with the credits. So it's just not affordable at this time for, you know, the average person in this town. And I think it's just sending that message that you have to do this. You know, we're forcing you to do that, even though I understand that's not the case. But it's really, I don't think we're focusing on things we need to be focusing on as far as helping people find housing and things like that. That's all. So.
Okay.
Good questions.
Yeah, very good.
Good conversation.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions regarding the energy chapter? Okay, make a motion to conclude the hearing. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. Okay, so we'll go right on now to the regular meeting.
And Tim, just to, so this, this is closed in the planning commission. This now goes to the select board to have their own public hearing and adopt that.
That's right, yep. We'll send a letter to the select board, and then they'll have the... So it'll be another chance for everybody to review it. Okay, so call a meeting, regular meeting to order at 6:50. We'll adjust the agenda. We have an agenda adjustment. Jason Rasmussen's here to discuss, we're going to discuss housing tonight.
That works for you?
Yes. We can discuss a lot with you, so. Okay. Approved meeting minutes. I think we'll wait till next month, because I don't believe they've been posted yet to the...
They are, actually.
Oh, they are?
I did see that, yeah.
They weren't this morning.
No, they weren't.
Yeah, I think just, we probably ought to wait until next month, just so the public has a chance to review, and then we'll just do our thing. Okay, I think we'll go ahead, let's do the housing study first, but then we'll go to the subdivision stuff.
I'll share my screen here. Maybe you can have a second. There you go. So I know that's a little small for you all, but what I was hoping to do, maybe you can go over my shoulder if you want. So we have, I think, we talked to you about this before. The original commission hired the SE Group as a consulting firm, and they're helping us to do this housing study. What we're really trying to do is just try to understand where in the region are, you know, is best suited for housing development. And we talked with you, the planning commission, before about town trying to find a certain number of sites that would be good for housing. And so really, the idea is try to do kind of a pre-screening, if you will. What I'm going to show you doesn't say this is where it's going to go, but this is where it might go, this is where there's infrastructure. This is where, you know, it might go a little, a little easier. Might allow for the densities that a developer would be able to do a project and make one. Basically, that's what, that's what we're trying to do, is make the process a little easier. So this is literally brand new. I got this this morning. So I was going to walk through this with you a little bit. This is what we call a story map, and it's really intended to just explain what this thing is all about and how it'd be good. And then we'll get into a little more of the suitability. So afterwards, I can send the links around, so you can play with yourselves. So I'm just going to pass scroll through this. There's a basic introduction of why are we doing it, and so the housing situation. And we're trying to do this so that it just makes, it a little easier for developers to find sites that are good. That's all. And so you're going to see the number of details. I'm not going to read any of this stuff, but you're welcome to check it out later. It talks about sort of the purpose of this suitability model. For the most part, what we're really looking at is where's there water and sewer infrastructure? And we'll see shortly that, you know, the two villages and other villages in the area are pretty much where those suitable areas are. But we looked at other factors, too. So this, this is showing where the infrastructure generally is. So the green areas basically are those village centers. And then the red, the darker, the shades are generally the steep slopes, the, you know, state lands, those sorts of areas where it's easy. There's not infrastructure in those places. We also looked at environmental constraints. And this is a little bit below, but, you know, generally speaking, we were looking at a lot of different things. Where's our flood issues? Where's there steep slopes? Where's wetlands, wildlife habitat, man, those sorts of constraints? So that was sort of built into this. You can kind of get in here and explore it on your own if you want. Okay, also, we're looking at where, you know, where are jobs? Where are the grocery stores? Where's hospitals? So they have what they're calling service clusters, which, not surprisingly, are in the larger towns. So we're looking at those sorts of things as well. The idea that, you know, housing that's closer to those clusters, you know, is going to be better suited for folks who can't drive and those sorts of things. We also looked at public transportation. We looked at sidewalks. We looked at a number of other factors. This is just basically, the dark and green is showing where there's transit routes, essentially is what that's showing. And then, you know, you push all that stuff together, and they ended up doing this analysis, and it resulted in this suitability map. And I'm going to transfer to the, there's another page that I'm going to show you. We can zoom in a little bit more detail on that. And... There you go. So I wish this, the map was a little bigger. Maybe that's something we can refine over time. But again, what we're looking at is the map of the region. These are the 10 towns that we worked with. Springfield being down here, Cavendish right here. And although, so in Cavendish, you're seeing, and I can zoom in a little bit here, too. The red and the darker red are basically the least suitable for housing, whether state-owned lands, steep slopes, again, those sorts of factors play into that. You know, the darker green are the most suitable based on the model. And not too surprisingly, they're in primarily your two river centers, for the most part. That's where the water is. And you'll see it's excluding, generally, it's less suitable along the river. It's not waiting heavily floodplains and things like that. So not that we can't do development there, but saying it would be better outside of floodplains and steep slopes and all that sort of thing. This version is for sort of the public, and so it's got these little shapes that it's not parcel-specific. So we're trying to show you sort of a generalized version of this. We also have a, the backend, there's a parcel-based version. Kind of zoom in on that, if anyone wants to do that. So that's sort of the really basic overview. Are there any questions?
Is it possible to change the weighting on the various factors that go into that? Can you weight, say, floodplains more or less, you know what I'm saying?
It would be hard for us to change it now.
Okay.
We made various assumptions, and...
Sure.
There's somewhere in here, you can click on this, I can't see it. Methodology, that kind of walks you through some of that stuff. It'd be hard for us to change it now, but we did, we made a number of assumptions, that being one of them, where right now, the conversation's all about flood resiliency. Have we not have, what we just went through in July happened so badly next time around? So we waited, that pretty heavily.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I have a comment. In terms of building affordable housing, I mean, with construction prices skyrocketing, I don't know if there's any methods, you know, economies of scale, contractors, you know, who build the same type of units? So they, you know, cheaper costs on windows, everything.
Yeah, I mean, costs are crazy, as we all know. One of the, I didn't talk too much about it. One of the factors we were looking at was designated village centers, and then have a weighting, and then the area immediately surrounding them also have a weighting. So you don't currently have neighborhood development area designation, so that you could have like a quarter-mile ring around the village centers, potentially designated as that. And that does provide some financial benefits that wouldn't have been wins or... Housing Trust at least tells us is really important for them to do a housing project. So tax credits, yeah, I think the short answer is we need extra money from somewhere else to work. So whether, whether we can buy town-owned land that, you know, people's giving away to a developer to make it easier, whether there's the tax credits, the neighborhood designation benefits, other things, grants, et cetera, that could kind of make, make the money, make the financing work a little bit better, essentially. I think we're at a point where we all need to be a little creative, and towns are thinking about revolving loan funds and other things that might, tax stabilization, various different things that might help. It's not going to do everything, but it might help a developer make it happen.
And I guess we could discuss whether single-family housing or duplexes. Obviously, it would be cheaper for duplexes, but...
I mean, I think, you know, whatever, we need a little bit of all of it, right? So I think the model, probably our primary audience for this particular model is a larger developer, but I think certainly somebody converting their barn into an accessory dwelling or converting their old farmhouse into maybe two or three units, all of that's good. And I think when you're in an area certified by water and sewer, it's just that much easier. You don't have to deal with septic systems and upgrading the tank and whatever else you might need to do anyways.
Okay. All right.
Is there a reason why it's not parcel-specific for the public? Because wouldn't that...
We had some debates about that.
Public records?
And, yeah, it's on public record, but, you know, I mean, when, when you start to show it, and somebody's like, oh, I'm white or green, why is that? You know, that's, you're telling me my land's not good? You know, we don't want to have that conversation, really. But we do have it, and it is available, and we tend to get available to you. And, you know, part of, we're thinking about doing, we're trying to identify a few lots that would be, you know, sort of big enough that like the Housing Trust could do a project. And maybe it's 20 units, maybe it's a little more. Is that something we want? I don't know, but we want to see, like, where would those potential areas be? And so we are starting to drill down a little bit more into, so we have it, and it is available to, you know, we kind of didn't want it out there for public consumption for that reason. we kind of didn't want it out there for public consumption for that reason.
I mean, at some point, when we get down to brass tacks, right? We'll have to maybe approach landowners and see if they do have any interest.
Yeah, absolutely. I think ideally it would be like that.
Right.
We would talk to landowners, who's interested, who's not.
Right.
And then what?
Right.
Then what happens? And maybe there's a way to work with partners to make something happen. Look at all the financing and other things like that.
Sure, if they're interested, right?
If they're interested.
Yeah. All right.
So where do you see us taking this consolidated information from here? Or is that waiting for like, hey, these are some properties that would be good?
You know, it's, um, I, I would, I think it'd be great to drill down in a little more detail with you all. And if there are some lots that somebody mentioned something off of maybe 20 Mile Stream, where somebody's interested in, you know, if we can identify a few of these, it'd be great. You know, maybe we get them out there. Bellows Falls and places like that, like have them out there. They're kind of promoting them, marketing them if you will. And that wouldn't be the worst thing in the world, obviously, if we could make something happen on those, on those spots.
There is, yeah, there is a property owner on 20 Mile Stream who, who is interested and it may be a good fit. But we can.
Again, this is not super site specific, but you know, maybe it's in that dark green area. And if it is, then, you know,
Yep.
maybe talk. There's, there's an Upper Valley Housing Fund. There's, again, the tax credits may not go that far, I'm not sure. But, you know, we can explore all those options and maybe get them going, actually help them get something going.
Okay.
Is that the downtown, downtown and village tax credit thing? Is that something the town needs to opt into or like classify that designation?
Yeah, so Cavendish has a designation that the state, state downtown board is the one that currently designates them. And there are two village centers that are designated, Proctorsville and Cavendish. And I don't remember exactly the boundaries, but it's close here. And yeah, that gives, it's a non regulatory program, but it gives property owners access to some of these tax credits, which aren't going to do it all for them, but they, they help.
Yeah. And I'm sure like a, a letter from the town could carry a lot of weight in those or could carry some weight.
It could carry some weight and there's also some, there are some funding out there. A lot of it's more geared towards affordable housing, but there are some and there could be some grant applications. Maybe the town helps support, you know, letter of support for that or those sorts of things.
Okay.
Was this, uh, was this study, uh, what you, what you hoped to get out of it?
Mostly, I think, yeah. I think, yeah, we're pretty, I mean, again, we just got it this morning. But I'm fairly happy with it. We could probably tweak things a little bit. So if you're seeing something that's weird or gee, would be nice to have this other thing, that's good to know. We're going to have, what you're seeing on the screen now will have available to us ultimately as like a, you know, we can work with it in our mapping system better. So we'll have a little more ability to kind of turn like other layers on and off and do some other analysis with you. But yeah, I think in general it's good. I, I hope it's helpful. And again, we can, we can, we'd love to come back and talk in more detail if you'd like. Or in the meantime, we can send you the links and you can explore it on your own.
So this is public on your website that we can look at now or no?
Not yet.
Yep.
Not yet. At this point, it's a couple of links and email.
Yeah.
Eventually it'll get out of those. Call.
Okay. Well, this is great. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Anybody? Go ahead, Maureen.
Just to clarify, both the Village of Cavendish and Proctorsville already has that village designation?
Yes.
That's not something we have to apply for?
No, you'll, I don't remember the dates, but you'll ultimately need to renew it. But you're, you're good for it now.
And just to confirm that that property that you're talking about, Tim, is within the village designated village center?
Well, it's right next to it. It's, if it's not in it, it's very, it's adjacent.
And where are those maps? Are they easy to find?
I'm trying to see if I have it. I don't think I have it here. I can, if you searched Vermont Smart Growth Map, you might get it. There's the Agency of Commerce and Community know that has this online map. I believe they still refer to it as a smart growth map. You can zoom in to Cavendish and turn on where it is. Because I'll show you where they are. We also have some static maps that, you know, the town probably has somewhere. And we could also provide that if you can't find it.
Um, did it look at, like, did the study look at housing needs? Like saying like, oh, Cavendish really needs 100 units or like anything like that?
Not this one. We did, uh, we, we called it the Keys to the Valley study a couple of years ago. Then looked at that. It's now a little old, but, you know, we thought, pretty obvious, we need housing.
Yeah.
So why, why worry about, is it 100 or is it 300 units that we need or whatever the numbers are? That being said though, we probably will be updating on some, because it's nice to know what kind of housing.
Yeah.
I think we need a little bit of everything. We need senior housing, we need starter homes, we need, we need all kinds of different types.
Does that give you some fidelity on what's driving the big lack? I mean, you know, we all know nationally, you know, probably everybody's read the headlines, but is that Keys to the Valley study or even these maps give you like, you know, hey, we have a lack of housing because of reasons X, Y, and Z or?
You know, everybody has their opinion.
Yeah, that's.
You know, I think, I think it's fair to say it's a lot of things. You know, there are some regulatory issues in Cavendish. It's not zoning, but, you know, I see and fire safety code and those sorts of things play into it. Waste water permits, all that. Just the sheer cost, you know, the cost of materials and labor have gone crazy.
You compare that to median income and is that, is that part of the?
In, in part, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, there, there just really has been a real lack of production of new units over the years. You know, if you look at the numbers. And so we're really finding ourselves in a, in a hole. We've got to make up time and it's really not easy because of costs and other things. And, um,
Sure.
hard to find flat land. There's all kinds of factors, right?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if there are any low hanging fruit or key drivers we can narrow in on in addition to, I mean, this is great data, don't get me wrong, but if we can solve some of those issues.
Yep. I mean, the legislature in their own way is trying, you know, they're, they're pushing regulatory changes. They're trying to have some money to help with some housing projects. So maybe that will help end the curve, we'll see. It may, probably, I'm sure it's not enough, but, you know.
Is there anything that surprised you?
Not yet. Um, but again, you know,
Having looked at it one day.
There are some details that we hadn't quite seen yet, but it seems to make a lot of sense generally speaking. So not yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe ask me to.
Okay. Anything else on this? All right, let's, uh, I'm thinking maybe we should skip item six, continue discussion on impacts of short term rentals. Is anybody here wanted, here to discuss that? I'm just worried about time, you know, because we really need to review the, go over the all hazards mitigation plan if anybody has any comments.
We can do that next month.
Yeah.
The short term rentals.
Yeah.
Nothing's going to happen between now and then.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to, can we get some additional guidance from the select board as far as what exactly they're looking? Is there a specific concern that's driving their partners or is it, hey, they'll, they'll?
No, they just want to, they don't want anything to do with it, so they cave in to us.
I just want to know what our mission, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, for the short term rentals?
Yeah. What do you want us to address?
Select, yeah, the select board wanted us to look into it and give them the recommendations.
It's so broad that, okay. I wasn't sure if there was a specific, like, we're concerned that, you know, five years from now, the short term rentals will make it impossible for us to build housing or provide, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think that's the case, but.
I think maybe, you know, looking at like a registry rather than
Right.
actual enforcement's
Sure.
regulations, because that would be impossible.
But then given that broad guidance, I think pushing it a month is knocking it out.
No, no, that's fine. But I, I, I know they are, they want to adopt a all hazard mitigation plan. Because I think there's some funding that they need and they have to have it, so.
Let's do it.
Has anybody had a chance to look at it? And have any comments or questions we could pass on to the select board? One thing I noticed is I think they, they put in that we don't have a duly adopted town plan, which we do.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I wasn't sure if there was anything regarding railroad accidents or anything like that and plan of action. I don't know if that was included in that. So that was, other than that, I mean, it looked pretty good to me. If anybody else has any.
Yeah, I did journal comments, don't mind. Yeah, just, you know, I, you know, truth and advertising, I didn't finish the entire thing. But when I looked at it, I think it's, there's a lot of good work that went into it, obviously. And there's a lot of really good historical data, starting with like July, how they, we came up with this. What I don't see is, is a proscriptive or directive, like here's what's going to happen. Like that, it was all, here's what we did, here's what we did.
Right.
And then, but I would expect this to be something we pull off the shelf and action. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I think there's probably a good way to capture, this reads like an after action review to me in a lot of instances. Like we had an incident and here's what we did to recover from that incident, which is great to capture. But at the same time, I expect a plan to be directed, but going forward, next time there's a giant flood, you know, the next
Right.
hundred year flood that happens 99 years too early, then.
Right. What's the first thing we do?
Yeah, what's the next thing, you know, and so on and so forth. But I don't know. If that, if that, if anybody else had that kind of reaction to it. I'm excited, I zoned in particularly on, I think, section four, chapter four is where that kind of starts. So there's some proscriptive mixed in here. I'd say, you know, there's the description of the, uh, the team members for that hazard planning, team catalysts, what their responsibilities are. If that's something that we're going to call that team to action next time the floods happen, that's great. I think that's a good starting point. But the, the four preceding paragraphs in the beginning of chapter four, I'm on page 11, are, you know, here's what we did. Again, so that's, that to me reads like an after action report instead of here's going forward, what we're going to do. Does that, does that make sense? So I wonder if there's a way to capture the, the AAR, the after action report part of it somewhere else and then just be proscriptive going forward. Like, so I first saw the planning process title, I thought, okay, that's how we're going to plan from here forward. Here's the steps we'll take to plan. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, we could certainly bring that up at the select board meeting.
There we go. Because, yeah, there's a lot of changes from the prior Cavendish plan, which is again, good. We don't want to forget the past, certainly, but where are we going forward? We don't see that until really about page 16, which is the review of town progress, resources and capabilities section. And that's where you see the table four dot three dash one that lists the status of the previous stuff. And then I guess the asterisks indicate items carried forward to, to the current draft. So that's kind of where we start getting the meeting tables, if that makes any sense. So I wonder if there's a way to zoom in a little bit more on that.
Right. And there's also, um, with pages that they have different responsibilities between the select board, the planning commission and, um, yeah, I can go to that. So there are certain things that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's an incredibly valuable input in regards to that table as well. When I looked at my first instinct was, well, I think it's missing two columns and missing a office of primary responsibility. Like who's in charge of each one of these items? And the second was the suspense or due date for when we're supposed to, you know, have them do. Who do I, who do I look to and say, um, you know, at the bottom of page 16, who actively sought funding to provide backup power supply for the town EOC? And when was it completed and all that sort of stuff? Another one stood out to me, actively seek funding for something. Who's doing that and what does actively seek mean and when were they supposed to be completed at? But I think, I think getting to that level of fidelity is a, is a plan we can then track.
Sure.
Uh, progress.
Yeah, who's responsible.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, there's great stuff here, don't get me wrong, I'd probably still like to poke it a little more, but, you know, I think added fidelity, particularly determining who's responsible for what and when, would allow us to action the plan.
Right.
Okay.
So here we go. Yeah, page sixty six.
Oh, you're way ahead of me now.
Yeah. There's a litigation action or strategy.
Yeah.
And then partners responsible.
There we go.
Yep. So.
Yeah, so there's some responsible parties. And then the timeframes, I'd say we could, I wonder if we can, you know, make some of this slightly more of a specific. What does long term mean, for instance? I wonder.
Yeah.
I think that is much better separate.
Right. We have here, encourage residents in high erosion risk areas to consider taking steps such as limiting tree cutting or clearing, minimizing site disturbances and using special design techniques to manage stormwater on site. I mean, that's, I mean, some of that comes into subdivision regulations because that addresses site drainage.
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
Sixty, sixty six. But, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I might, well, yeah, it goes a couple of pages, but it's, I quoted from page 68.
Sixty eight, okay. So that's us as the planning commission that's supposed to be doing that.
Right.
Yeah, so how are we encouraging everybody to?
I don't know. I mean, that's kind of telling people what they should be doing. I mean, I mean, maybe through education, if people are interested.
Yeah.
And they buy to do it, then we could help, but.
I wonder how much of, do people actually know, you know, hey, these are some solutions, this keeps happening or, you know, hey?
Yeah, let's see if a forestry management plan, for instance, or a degree in forestry.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know what those techniques are? I certainly don't have that degrees.
Well, at, at the state now with Act 250, they're, they're looking at every stream, even if it's seasonal. And they like to see, like for Act 250 projects, they want to see 50 foot buffers along each stream. Whereas before it was just, you know, prevent the streams that flowed all year. But I mean, I, to their point, I mean, if you get a lot of development and you're building too closely these streams and you're adding roads, roofs, hard spaces, I mean, that all contributes to more flooding. In a lot of towns, you know, they have like a zero runoff, where if you do a subdivision, you have to contain all of your runoff on site with like retention ponds or infiltration areas, things like that. So I could probably see as we go, if Cavendish does have a, a big development craze, you know, that could be beneficial. Yeah, so, but.
One of the problems is once we learn about some of the benefits of taking care of, of the land by streams for the storms that are coming, getting the education out is, is, is difficult. I mean, where do you put it? And so that people can read it and, and, or, you know, take advantage of it and say, yeah, this would be beneficial to me if, you know, if my house isn't flooded, you know, if I, if I do these things, you know? So getting the information out is, is something we need to explore.
That's right. Yeah, reading parrot instead of passive.
We have a question from a gentleman.
Sure, having been in Vermont my entire life and done through every flood, nineteen seventy-three, all it really takes is one good flood, at least for me, I don't know about anybody else, but when you watch your driveway go down the river, uh, you pretty much very quickly seek out the sources that you need to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
And with the wonders of, you know, YouTube and internet research, there's a lot of information out there that's easily accessible.
Good.
Yeah, just making that information available to townspeople.
Easily for people, so you don't have to go, you know, spend a day trying to search for something, you know, it's, 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 it's front and center, especially in the flood zones.
The agency of, isn't the, the A and R that has all that access, uh, access to all that information on its website, natural resources?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, it's just a simple search.
Right, even if, you know, people, when they go for a building permit, it can be part of the package, just information and.
Yeah.
That's a proactive way of doing it, yeah.
Proactive, that should, you know.
Until you don't have to go through the flood before you make your, you know, your decision.
I don't know, it's like fire beware, you know, I mean, if you're gonna lay down a couple hundred thousand dollars minimum for a house, I mean, require a home inspection, property inspection, when you buy a house, is that a requirement for a mortgage?
Kind of, sometimes.
That seems like common sense to me, but maybe it's not so common.
Yeah, I think people in general are becoming a little more aware.
They certainly, they certainly are compared to just thirty years ago.
Oh, yeah, I, I remember, you know, people would just put a mile-long driveway, you know, they had more money, and, and, you know, they put a house on top of a huge hill, and just the maintenance of it, and the washouts, and going off the road the winter, it's, I think, you know, it's not worth it, I don't, doesn't matter how much money you have, if, um, but, um.
Well, it was interesting how many people do not realize that their, you know, Cavendish doesn't have zoning, but there's flood regulations and
Right.
that, those development restrictions that have been in place for a long time and, and people are not aware of it.
Or paying attention.
All right, is there any other comments or questions on this?
I had a bunch of specific ones, I'm not sure, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, uh, this is a lot of it's minor stuff, but page seven, um, very first paragraph, uh, we talk about the Town Board in Cavendish, we skipped Redding. Yeah, so to the, our biggest boarder, we, we, I think, just a mission by accident.
Okay. All right.
So I think we just add Redding into the list to be fine.
Yeah, and we could kind of give a list to the Select Board.
I, do you want to just save my fire then for that, or?
No, no, go for it, no, we can, we can present it to them next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, uh, page eight, the second half par- paragraph, that's, I found that one tough to read and it gets to a lot of the census information and the, uh, the median income stuff, and interestingly enough, it quotes uh, just shy of sixty-one hundred, or sixty-one thousand for the median income, but I just, some alternate wording, I think it might be slightly less confusing because it jumps back and forth. Uh, you know, Windsor County's population of fifty-five, one ninety-one, experienced uninterrupted growth since nineteen fifty, however, then it goes back and kind of contradicts itself in saying that it, that, uh, decreased population over the last decade, so I just, I think there's a clearer way to, to probably say that.
Right.
And then talks about it increasing again, so.
Okay.
I've, I think there's an easier way to say that.
Okay.
Well, let's see. I think we could probably reword Smith, if you will, that last paragraph as well, I've got suggestions from both that I can send out if, if you'd rather, other than reading them out loud to everybody right now, I think that would put us all to sleep.
Could you do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic.
If you'd rather, I, I've got a list of very specific ones I can, I can just send out if that's faster.
That would, yeah, that would be, yeah, that would be faster.
I think so, okay.
Yeah, but easier for everybody to, you know, we could just pass that on.
Absolutely. Okay, yeah, other than that, the big question I have is just making sure we put actionable
Right.
data in with, who, who knows who's responsible and when we.
Yep.
They know the two or three.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay, uh, review correspondence, we don't have any, uh, new business, old business?
Tim, did we skip the subdivision stuff?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Let's go, that'll be quick. So, we need to set a date, we're gonna have a, uh, everybody here, we're gonna have like an open forum to go over the subdivision regulations, the draft subdivision regulations, uh, it's gonna be, we're gonna set a date, but very informal. We'll have a, you know, presentation and pizza, some food. Remember, we did that a long time ago, that brought people out, so.
Maybe, perhaps, usually it's.
Yeah, they did, you know, want to get people's ideas, what they think of it and.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, and see where it goes, so I'm thinking probably, like, end of April?
Yeah.
I mean, we can look at the dates now.
Make it part of the regular meeting?
No, I think it should be separate.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, even like on a weekend.
Okay.
I don't know what people think about that, but, um. Let's see, April. Well, yeah, when's the school break? I think that's like.
I think it's like early April.
April eighth, or the eighteen?
I think like the second week.
Second week.
Okay.
I think it's early.
Maybe we could do something, I mean, what did everybody think about, uh, like a Saturday evening?
Okay. Can, concerning me, you won't be able to do one, um, Saturday midday that time of year because I am burials. Every, every, uh, Saturday and Sunday through, uh, up to, including Memorial Day.
Okay, well, we could do it at like five o'clock?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Like on the, uh, twenty-seventh?
Okay.
Just a quick, is, on a weekend, is that something that will attract more people or detract? I mean, I'm someone who
Detract.
that would detract, I'm like a public, like, you know, work kind of a.
Or maybe then, yeah, midweek, dinnertime, and I'm thinking of like young families, but, I mean, midweek's fine, too.
Like five-thirty time, I think?
Yeah. Okay.
You think that better?
All right. So what day, we can do twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth is a Friday?
No.
Passover is, what, the twenty-second?
It's twentys- yep. We could do a Wednesday.
That'd be better, I would say, wouldn't you?
Twenty-fourth, all right, I'm getting some nods.
Is that a, that's not a vacation week, is it?
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Five-thirty?
Yep.
Pizza?
Yeah, I could talk to, uh, Goodman's, see if we can, probably have to get frozen.
And then?
I don't think they're open then.
Everybody? Heat one up at home and bring it in, is that?
Well, I think, I think we could do it at the fire station.
Okay.
So, the Proctorsville.
Talk to Rebecca.
Well, I talked to Chris Marks.
Chris.
He said just let them know what date.
And so do it at the fire station?
Yeah, yep. Cause they have, uh, ovens and all that, we can heat stuff up.
Okay.
That does not conflict school break.
Okay, and then should we have anything else, salad or desserts?
We can figure that out.
Okay.
What?
Yeah, no, you're gonna start stuff, I know.
Okay, so we got that set. Um, all right, we'll go to, um, any new business, old business, anybody?
No.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
A second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Thanks.
All right, all right.